Good evening, everybody, and welcome to this meeting of Troy City Council for Tuesday, February 18th, 2020. My name is William Lutz, Council President. We will begin tonight's meeting with an invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance led by Mr. Schelling.
James Madison, a founding father and author of the First Amendment, once wrote that religion and government will both exist in greater purity unless they are mixed together. With that in mind, let me take you on a journey back to the year 1984. 1984 was an election year. The prior 15 years had seen the country fight and exit the Vietnam War, a war that created a divisiveness in this country that hasn't been seen or felt since the Civil War. Our country saw a Middle East eruption in conflict, and our Congress brought charges of impeachment against our president. Our country felt the economic effects of an oil embargo, a recession, skyrocketing inflation, and interest rates, stagflation, and another recession. We witnessed an attempted assassination of our president. For some, this time period was the best of times, but for many, it was not. In the fall of 1984, President Reagan's campaign released a TV ad that began with "It's morning in America again. Today, more men and women will go to work than ever before in our country's history." The ad continued with some rosy economic statistics, and as sentimental music plays softly in the background, it ended with a call to continue the Reagan presidency. The question is, is it still morning in America? Morning signifies a rising sun, the beginning, not the ending, and with a new day, new opportunities. Our union is not yet perfect. We have differences and disagreements on its direction. Some feel that they have been left behind. Many feel that there is no way forward. Like 1984, it is the worst of times for some. Let us pray that we never see the sun set on our great country. Let us pray that we can hear and understand opinions that differ from our own. Let us pray that we can work together and that we never forget that we all share the common goal to continue to build this great country that offers freedom and unlimited opportunities to all. Let us pray that we can prosper from the opportunities offered and have the ability and desire to help others prosper as well. Benjamin Franklin was a member of the Constitution Convention in Philadelphia in the summer of 1787, and witnessed the Constitution being formed by compromise after compromise after compromise. When the Constitution was finally completed and accepted by the convention, Franklin rose one last time to address the attendees. He brought to their attention the painting behind the dais. He said he often wondered if the painting was of a rising or a setting sun. He concluded that day that it was truly a rising sun. It was morning in America in Philadelphia in September of 1787. It was morning in America in the fall of 1984, and let us pray that today it is morning in America. Let us be thankful that we live in America, that we have chosen Troy, Ohio, USA, one of the best small towns in America, as our hometown. Let us now honor our country and our flag. Join with me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Schelling. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Schelling?
Present.
Mr. Allen?
Present.
Mr. Swazer?
Present, yes, here.
Mr. Phillips?
Here.
Mrs. Snee?
Here.
Mr. Twilliger?
Here.
Mr. Rozell?
Here.
Mr. Severt?
Here.
Mr. Twist?
Here.
All members are present.
Excellent. Moving on to the summary of minutes. Mrs. Knight, will you please read a summary of the minutes of the February 3rd, 2020 meeting of City Council?
Minutes of Council, February 3, 2020. Committee reports, Buildings and Utilities Committee recommended that legislation be prepared authorizing bidding for the rebuilding of the Parkson screen at the wastewater plant. Legislation be prepared authorizing agreement for the design of fire station one replacement project. Legislation be prepared authorizing bidding for Internet and telephone services for city facilities, and legislation be prepared authorizing bidding for HVAC replacement system. Finance Committee recommended that a loan be approved to Keystone Real Estate Group LTD in the amount of $125,000. Streets and Sidewalks Committee recommended legislation be prepared to be the resolution of necessity for Phase 12 of the sidewalk program. The Personnel Committee reported regarding appointments by the mayor to the Board of Zoning Appeals and to the Board of Health, and the appointment of Ann Baird was approved, and the appointment of Martha Baker was approved. Resolution Number R7, 2020, rebuilding Parks and Screen Number Two project, first reading and adopted. Resolution Number R8, 2020, agreement for design of fire station was given first reading and was adopted. Resolution Number R9, 2020, bid for Internet and telephone services at city facilities, first reading and adopted. Resolution R10, 2020, bid and contract for replacement of HVAC system at central maintenance and service facility, first reading and adopted. Resolution Number R11, 2020, application of Keystone Real Estate Group for a loan was given first reading and adopted. Resolution Number R12, resolution of necessity, Phase 12 of sidewalk program was given first reading and adopted. Those are presentation on behalf of Child Care Choices, and then being no other business council adjourned at 7:53.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. We will entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
It has been moved by Mr. Rozell, and seconded by Mr. Phillips, to approve the minutes of the February 3rd, 2020 meeting. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Schelling?
Yes.
Minutes are approved.
Thank you. Moving on to committee reports, we have four reports this evening, two written and two oral. We'll begin with the written reports, both from the Community and Economic Development Committee, with Councilmember Lynn Snee.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Community and Economic Development Committee met on February 10th to consider recommending that council accept easements associated with three completed street projects. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared accepting easements related to permanent right-of-way and utility uses associated with the completed street improvement projects of North Market Street Reconstruction Phase Two, Macagge Road Reconstruction Phase Four, and the signal improvements at North Market Street and Troy Urbana Road, and to further authorize the Director of Public Service and Safety to execute any related documents. As this relates to completed projects, committee supports emergency legislation so that the process can be finalized, and this is respectfully submitted by Mr. Rozell, Mr. Twist, and myself as chair.
Thank you, Mrs. Snee. Do your council members have any comments or questions on this report? Seeing none, Mrs. Snee, second report, please.
Thank you. This committee met on February 10th to consider a recommendation of the Community Improvement Corporation, or CIC, that would provide for the owners of the Sherwood Shopping Center to sell a small portion of that property. There would still be sufficient collateral to support the loan balance associated with the loans to the shopping center owner to which the CIC is a participant. As recommended by the CIC, this committee recommends that legislation be prepared to authorize the release of mortgages and assignments of assumption and leases for the Sherwood Shopping Center for the portion of the property to be sold, so that the sale of the parcel can be finalized and the loan closing scheduled. Committee supports emergency legislation, and this is respectfully submitted by Mr. Rozell, Mr. Twist, and myself as chair.
Thank you, Mrs. Snee. Do any council members have any comments or questions on this item? Seeing none, moving on, we have oral reports this evening from the Law and Ordnance Committee. Councilmember Todd Severt, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I am pleased to report notice has been received for two liquor permits, one at Harren's Market, two East Main Street for a new D2 permit, and the second one at S&amp;G Stores LLC, 801 West Main Street, which is informally known as the Marathon Station on Main Street, to have the approved C1 trucks permit and safekeeping.
Thank you, Mr. Severt. Are there any comments or questions on these items? Seeing none, we will now move on to citizen comments on any of the committee reports that have been given, or any of the items that are on the agenda for this evening's meeting. If you wish to speak, please come to the lectern, give us your name and address. You have two minutes to speak, and Mr. Kerber will be our timekeeper this evening. Seeing no comments, we'll move right along. There are no resolutions this evening, but we do have three ordinances. Mrs. Knight, will you please read ordinance O6, 2020?
Ordinance Number O6, 2020, ordinance accepting easements for street improvement projects in the city of Troy, Ohio, and declaring an emergency. This is related to the North Market Street Improvement Project Phase Two, Macagge Road Project Phase Four, and the Traffic Signal Project at North Market and Troy Urbana Road, and this is the first reading.
Have the council members wished to dispose of this item?
I'll move for suspension.
Second.
It has been moved by Mr. Phillips, seconded by Mr. Twist, to suspend the three-reading rule. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Schelling?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Move for adoption.
Second.
The three-reading rule has been suspended, has been moved by Mr. Phillips for adoption and seconded by Mr. Swazer. Are there any comments or questions on this item? Seeing none, Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Schelling?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Moving on to ordinance O7, 2020. Mrs. Knight, will you please read the ordinance?
Ordinance Number O7, 2020, ordinance authorizing the partial release of mortgage liens for Sherwood of Troy LLC and declaring an emergency. This was reported on this evening. It is releasing a small parcel of the property, first reading.
How did, move to suspend?
Second.
It has been moved by Mr. Rozell, and seconded by Mr. Phillips, to suspend the three-reading rule. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Schelling?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schelling?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Excellent. Moving on to our third ordinance of the evening, ordinance O8, 2020. Mrs. Knight, will you please read the ordinance?
Yes. Ordinance Number O8, 2020, ordinance amending the general plan of the Halifax Villas Plan Development, PDR, in the city of Troy, Ohio, and rezoning an 8.015 acre parcel added to the Halifax Villas Plan Development. As a part of the amended general plan, from AR, Agricultural Residential Zoning District, to a residential plan development, PDR. This has been recommended for approval by the Troy Planning Commission. There will be a public hearing at the next council meeting.
Excellent. Thank you, Mrs. Knight, and due to that public hearing, this will be laid over for a second reading at the next meeting. This time, we have two presentations to council this evening. First presentation from Tree Care Incorporated. If there's a representative of Tree Care Incorporated, or another individual, that would like to come forward and speak?
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome.
For those that don't know me, my name is Jeremy Drake. I'm the park superintendent here at the city of Troy. I am here on behalf of Eric Davis with Tree Care Incorporated. He is the founder and owner of Tree Care, as well as David Muir, also with Tree Care. And I have some exciting news that we want to share with you this evening, but before I get to that, I first want to publicly thank Mr. and Mrs. Robinson for their generous donation and the Trees for Troy grant that we received last month. And I think it's safe to say right now, as I stand before you, all of us in this room in some way, shape, or form, were impacted by the quote-unquote "small tornado" that ripped through our city last month. And whether you were in the path of the storm, or just driving through our city and noticing the trees that were knocked down, the trees that are no longer there, that were destroyed by the storm, it has impacted us all, and I thank the Robinson Fund for that generous donation. I will admit, though, as soon as I learned of the grant, I began to piece together how we would plant 65 trees, and how we were going to absorb that additional workload with our park department staff, and an already extremely busy spring season that we're going to go into here. And so, within days of learning of the Trees for Troy grant, I began to speak with Eric Davis, and I've been accused by some in this room, I won't mention any names, he might be sitting over here, though, of being a tree hugger. And I will admit, I am compassionate, and we all know that. I'm compassionate for trees in our city, and that's okay. We all know the benefits that they provide. And I think it's safe to say that with me here tonight, I've got two other guys that are equally passionate about trees, and both Eric and David are Troy residents, they live right here in our community, and their business is local, they've been in business for years. And within days of beginning to talk to Eric and piece this together, Eric immediately came forward and offered a match grant in the amount of $10,000 to completely cover the planting of all 65 trees that we're going to purchase. And so, I've asked if Eric and David both, I don't want to embarrass them, but if they would just stand up, if we could recognize them for a little bit of... It doesn't feel like enough just to say thank you to these people that care so much about our community, but it takes an extreme burden off of our city staff and our departments. Just want to extend that thanks to them. We are going to be working closely with them in the coming weeks and months to source trees as locally as possible. That will be our goal, that we keep the money right here as close to Troy as we can, and get this done in a timely and efficient manner, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Drake.
Thank you.
Mr. Davis, Mr. Muir, thank you very much for your generous gifts this evening. We really appreciate it. This time, we have a second presentation from Mrs. Cheryl Bender with the Clubhouse Dream Builders Group.
Good evening. Hope everybody's having a good one. I'm Cheryl Bender, like Bill said, and I'm the Clubhouse Director. Club is a very unique experience, building up the next generation of teens and kids, and in Troy, we've been doing this for the last 25 years. Our mission is simply free teen-led after-school and summer tutoring, faith and life skills for second through sixth graders with limited opportunities. So, seventh through 12th graders mentoring children, four days a week, and 110 days a year, totally free to the parents. Why Clubhouse is beneficial to the Troy community? I think number one is childcare. At the February 3rd Troy Council meeting, Child Care Choices and the Continuum of Care shared stats of childcare crisis right here in Miami County. Parents with multiple children can pay between 61% to 74% or 79% of their take-home pay towards childcare. Unreal. Causing tough decisions for parents, if it's even feasible to have a job, further can they even find childcare openings for their children? Add in limited public transportation in some areas, making things even harder for parents with unreliable transportation at times to access childcare that might not necessarily be found in the Troy area. So, Clubhouse is beneficial because it provides 65 spaces for childcare here in Troy, children with limited opportunities. Last year, 89 children attended a Troy Clubhouse. There are two locations within walking distance of four elementary schools. Those schools are Kyle, Haywood, Forest, and Van Cleve. Walking distance, I believe, is key, so parents don't have to leave work to get their children to and from Clubhouse. Clubhouse starts minutes after school dismisses, and then ends at 5:15 for parents that might be working for shift to get home to welcome their children. Clubhouse sites are at Garden Manor Apartments and St. Pat's Catholic Church in the undercroft. We selected these locations due to the higher concentration of needs in those specific neighborhoods. Research shows that children in need who have one mentor that truly cares and sticks by them will have more hope and success over their lifetime. Clubhouse provides a minimal of four teen mentors each week, with most of our teens working majority of the year with the same children. Sam Nation, standing right beside me, will talk more about that in a few minutes. Research further shows that 53% of Miami County kindergartners are not prepared as they enter school. That's more than half of our kids are not ready for school. They are at risk even before starting, and this can snowball if they don't catch up. Children with limited opportunities have 30 million less vocabulary words and understanding them at age three than children with greater opportunities. Clubhouse teens tutor children in small group settings of three to one, three children to one team, and this gives more individual care to the kids. Two of those days are for, and helping kids with homework. One day is focused on sports, arts, and community service, and another day on faith activities. Two days of tutoring, and I just want to stress that our teens aren't college-educated, but they are there to love and are dedicated to help the kids with their homework. 45 minutes of homework, two days a week, that would entail spelling, vocabulary words, math flashcards. We do parent-teacher letters, where parents and teachers give our teens extensive insight into what they need to be doing with our kids. We do large group readings every day. We challenge the kids in group activities so that they will learn how to solve problems in a group setting. Clubhouse provides snacks, helping parents who have limited access to healthy food. In the summer, Clubhouse is right after community summer lunches, expanding childcare time for parents from 11:00 a.m. to after 4:00 o'clock, four days a week. This summer's Clubhouse is running from June 8th through July 29th, and that's seven full weeks of summer activities for the kids. This year, we will have one day of educational and fun activities for the kids to continue reading and working on their math skills. We have sources for the kids to actually take home the books of their own, so that they continue reading, not only at Clubhouse, but at home. And this summer, we'll also have field trips, and we are huge into service projects with seniors. We love the kids getting downtown to clean up around those areas of need, so if you know of any of those spots, call us. And we swim, we have a 48-hour camp, and parents can register their kids easily online. We have a website, clubhousedbg@wordpress.com. You can call me at 937-667-1069, extension 274, or you can stop by any Clubhouse during their program hours. I think a second benefit that Clubhouse is all about is equipping that next generation. Research shows involving youth before the age of 14 and rewarding volunteer service builds a lifetime commitment of giving back through their service and their resources. Clubhouse was created so teens could have ongoing meaningful opportunities to grow in their leadership and gain life skills. Teens today face insurmountable challenges that stand in the way of them becoming tomorrow's successful adult leaders. There is growing need for training teen leaders who can model to their peers that young people can make a difference in their communities. The largest job markets are focused on teenagers in fast food and entertainment, where their efforts are not directly benefiting community needs. Clubhouse is giving teens opportunity to learn leadership through hands-on experiences while receiving payment or volunteer experience. Paid interns keep teens in high school from choosing between fast food jobs or creating after-school opportunities for their peers and children who desperately need role models. Each intern can reach approximately 30 to 40 teens each year in working at our Clubhouse locations, mentoring kids, and last year in Troy, over 79 teens gave a minimal of one day a week for five weeks. And teens can sign up also online at the clubhousedbgwordpress.com, or they can get information at the Troy Schools Guidance Offices. Clubhouse also provides college students field placements in social work and education. Students gain a holistic understanding of the nonprofit, church, school, combined efforts in helping children with limited opportunities. Watching teens mentor children is powerful in relationships that are developed, building each other's life skills, et cetera, and possibly giving them a step forward into future careers as they learn together. Now, my friend over here, Clubhouse intern Sam Nation, also an Edison State Social Work student, is going to give you a little bit of insight in his roles and experiences at
Hi, my name's Sam Nation. I am an intern at the Troy West location for Clubhouse. It is at the Garden Manor Apartment Complex here in Troy. I've been working with Clubhouse for a little over six years. It all started when I was a sophomore in high school. A friend of mine, Megan Osman, she came to me, she was a Clubhouse intern at the time, at lunch. As a 15-year-old with no job and in high school, she asked me if I had anything that I would be interested in doing volunteer-wise, and I had nothing to lose, so I told her, why not? I started volunteering one day a week at the Garden Manor location, and from there, I shortly started to grow a love for the kids and the entire mission of Clubhouse. What they're doing is really impactful. You get to watch these kids grow up from a young age, I mean, especially if you're there consistently, and it's probably one of the most fulfilling and rewarding things I've ever done in my entire life. These kids oftentimes don't have a positive role model in their lives, and being that role model, like I said, is one of the most fulfilling things I've ever done. I am an intern for Cheryl through Edison State Community College. I'm a social work placement, and working with kids is always something I've wanted to do. What kind of sparked that was starting at Clubhouse, volunteering one day a week. That kind of just sparked my passion for wanting to help children, and, you know, I, even though I'm going to be done with my internship at the end of the spring, because I'll be graduating, I don't think I'm going to be going anywhere anytime soon. These kids, you kind of grow a pretty big attachment to them, and they grow a pretty big attachment to you. It's really awesome to come in every day and have their faces light up as they see you, and they want to, you know, run and give you a hug, and they look forward to seeing you, and I look forward to seeing them. It's probably the highlight of my day, every day of the week. So, yeah, just thought I'd share a little bit about the kind of impact that I've had and how they've affected me, and I've affected them, so, yeah.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sam. Thank you, Cheryl. Do any council members have any questions? Thank you again. Have a pleasant evening. This part will move on to communications and announcements. Mrs. Knight, do we have any?
No, sir.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Moving on to comments. Mayor Abanota.
I will just say thank you to Cheryl. My daughter Maggie was an intern when she was in high school, and so we have some personal experience with that. Thank you, Cheryl, very much.
Excellent. Moving on, Director of Public Service and Safety, Mr. Tittredon.
I have nothing this evening. Thank you, sir.
Wonderful. Thank you. Director of Law, Mr. Kerber.
I have nothing this evening. Thank you.
Nothing for Mr. Kerber. I would call on Mr. Friggy, but he's not here. I do have a question for Mr. Tittredon. At our last meeting, we approved a professional services contract for the renderings of the fire station, and I'm wondering, I had some questions out on the street, I'm wondering if you could give a general description on how those agreements and contracts are provided to the vendors of that service? How are they chosen?
Okay. So, just as a little comparison, normally what the council sees is a recommendation from staff. Anytime that we do a construction project, or we buy equipment, vehicles, et cetera, that are not on state bid, that are $50,000 or more. And when you see a recommendation, we ask for authorization to bid, which is formal bid, advertised, et cetera, with an amount not to exceed, and then we will award administratively... amount not to exceed, and then we will award administratively, the Board of Control will, as long as the bids don't exceed the amount that's council authorized. That's on the construction side, that's the typical way that we do it. The state law treats professional services the opposite way. So, in this case, when we are talking about any kind of design work, could be engineer, could be architecture, those kind of consultants that deal with professional services, what we do is, is that we will advertise, we will create and draw up requests for proposals, RFQs, if you will, requests for qualifications, where we will ask for interested parties to present their references, their background, their ideas for the project, and then the staff will narrow down a list of those that on their face have met the qualifications, and then take that group, schedule one-on-one meetings, and the professional service will present their package, if you will, their qualifications to the staff. After reviewing recommendations, maybe doing site visits in the case of architect for buildings, then the staff will narrow that down to a recommendation. It's at that point that, once we have the qualifications, we will ask the vendor to present their rate based on the number of hours that they say it's going to take. And then, once we have all of that information, then and only then do we come to council and ask for authorization to award that bid. So, it's opposite, again, to the construction side of it. We do reach out far and wide with professional services, as well as any of the other bids that we solicit.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Titterton.
You're welcome.
Do any council members have any questions this evening, any comments that you'd like to make? Mr. Schilling?
Yeah, back to Mr. Titterton. On the, you say it's based on a, like, an hourly rate and number of people, professional people working on the project. With the fire department, or the new firehouse, how many hours do they expect to utilize to design the new firehouse? And how many people do they think they'll need to do that?
I don't know that information off the top of my head, but I can get that to you.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that.
Any other comments or questions? Do we have any comments or questions from city staff that's in the audience this evening? Moving on to audience comments. If you wish to make a comment this evening, please come to the lectern, give your name and address, and you have as much time as you wish to consume.
My name is Connor Hannan, two East Main Street, Heron's Market. Just want to clarify my position on the D2 liquor permit that was presented this evening. D2 is, of course, as most of you know, involving wine. The purpose of this application for Heron's Market is not to turn Heron's Market into a bar. I just want to clarify mine and my wife's position on applying for this permit. We are not taking our market, and we are not turning it into a bar. We would just like to offer our customers quality wine with the current quality products that we provide already. That is our goal. The D2 permit does involve selling sealed bottles of wine, as well as pouring glasses. We don't think the D2 will limit us in any way as a C2 would, C2 referring to just the fact that you can only sell closed bottles of wine, sealed bottles of wine. With the D2 permit, we feel that we will be able to provide our customers with bottles of wine, and then take advantage of what could potentially be some events, as we on Detroit does a great job of downtown. We would love to take advantage of that and potentially offer our clients, customers, pour glasses of wine, and just keep that in our pockets to expand in the future. We would hate to limit ourselves in any way by applying for a lesser permit. Our current hours are eight to seven, Monday through Friday, and Saturday, eight to five. We do not have Sunday hours. Upon gaining this liquor permit, we do not plan to change those hours. That is, we're going to continue with our normal hours, our normal operation. We just simply want to offer our clients, customers, a quality product, in addition to all the wonderful things that we already sell. So, that's where we're coming from with that permit. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Heron. So, anyone else in the audience that wishes to speak tonight?
Good evening. Amy Shannon coming to you with the Miami County Food and Security Committee. I wanted to take this opportunity to introduce Alicia Barton. Alicia is with the Ohio State Extension Office, and she is the advisor for our committee. So, I wanted to give you some quick numbers. In 2019, we ended up doing five distributions. We didn't start these until in June. We served a total of 2,474 people in those five distributions, and that's 46,892 pounds of food that was provided to people during 2019. We've already had one distribution this year in January up in Pickwa. We served 703 people, and that is, it compromises 177 seniors that came that needed food. So, our next one is this Saturday. So, I have flyers, if anyone is interested. Ask you to share it on Facebook or any other places you are. It's at the Stauder Center, so it's here in Troy. And I'd also invite you to come out and spend some time with us, see how this operation works. We've already contacted the police department to let them know, because we know traffic gets a little hectic with these. So, we would invite you to come and see how it works. Volunteer if you have the time and opportunity. I know Mr. Phillips is volunteering again. We would appreciate any help that we can get. Thank you.
Time on Saturday?
12 to 2.
We start unloading the truck at 11, if you're...
Yeah, if you want to come volunteer.
Unload your muscles.
11 is great.
That's all John right there.
Thank you, Alicia. Thank you, Amy. Anyone else in the audience wish to speak this evening? Seeing no one else, I'm going to ask residents to be respectful, be responsible, and be a good citizen. This meeting stands adjourned. Our next meeting is on March 2nd, right here in council chambers at 7:00. Thank you.